December fourteenth, twenty twenty one Winchester Planning Board meeting. We are being recorded both via Windcam. Thank you, Windcam. Is Windcam here? Yes, Windcam's here. Hi, Windcam. Both via Windcam and via Zoom. If you don't want to show up on either, please turn off your audio and your camera. Something I've forgotten to mention in the past is anytime you want to get ahold of us, you can email the entire board at planningboard@winchester.us. And all emails go to every member of the board as well as our town planner, Brian Zekely. So why don't we do a roll call vote so we can prove we have a corps? Just call out present when I call your name, please. Cheryl Wolf.
Present.
Eeching Scott.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
Kurt Spring.
Present.
And I am the Objurious Chair, present. So, thank you all very much. We only have a few things on our agenda this evening, but we will be using that every single minute. So Brian, you have any quick updates for us?
So monthly I attend the North Suburban Planning Council. That's our subregion. So the Metropolitan Planning Council, which is the hundred and one cities in town surrounding Metro Boston, that's MAPC, but the subregion are the seven communities that are quite different. You know, Woburn and Stonem and Linfield and Winchester, to name a few. And those communities right there are all different, but we're experiencing a lot of the same issues related to transportation and they're trying to really see what the the region needs. And what we've found is that there's a lot of studies based since 2017 about east-west connections between these cities and towns, just, you know, in this in this subregion. And that east-west connection and the and the last mile, you know, we're really looking towards the next five to 10 years in terms of how that's going to work. And apparently there is a large need for coordinated, small-scale shuttle service that is really tailored towards each community, but can be. There there needs to be cross-communication between each municipality to see if there's any potential overlap in, you know, state funding. Typical typically for Massachusetts, there is a lot of silos that goes on between especially transportation. And that's trying, that's been trying to change for many years within the MPO. But the MPO was at the North Suburban Planning Council meeting this this morning. And they do have a traffic or they do have like a shuttle working group that they have coffee, you know, either Zoom coffees or in-person coffees, two or three, maybe twice a month. And this is something that we can get involved with, and I was going to talk to T-TAC about it. Just talking about transportation in the region and how that last mile is important, looking towards the future. That's probably the biggest update I have for now. I'll pass it back to you, DM. You are muted, DM.
Hi.
There you are.
Oh, there I am. I was looking something up. I want to congratulate you, Brian, on the first stage and passing your for your. Oh darn, what is the acronym?
AICP.
AICP.
Yeah, certified planning.
That is excellent news. So the other thing I wanted to point out is the board may or may not know that there is an appeal of the previous board's decision on six fifty-four Main Street, also known as the Fellows Hardware Site. And it's been, I haven't heard anything for months and months and months. And today I was, I had to sign a paper, which was a responses to a series of questions by the plaintiffs. And so apparently something is happening. So that's all I can say is that there is motion. I don't know anything more than that, but there is motion. So that's pretty much it for my side. Are there any updates from the rest of the board?
I don't have an update, but I have a question, Brian. Can you just talk really quickly about Washington Swanton?
Sure. So, excuse me, sorry. Last night, the Select Board voted to take by eminent domain, so that means offer fair market value and take the property at Washington and Swanton for the purpose of affordable housing. There is now going to be the Working Group that was originally started for creating this RFP from the neighborhood. They're not going to be apparently the same exact group. There are some people that, it's unclear at the moment of how many people will be willing to participate. But if we can't get one or two members, we will probably reach out to get more in a very quick manner. And then there will be some type of a public meeting, a public process that's solely for the purpose of this RFP sometime in the mid to late January. I believe it's going to be January twelfth to Wednesday. So that'll be for the public, I believe. These these dates are not set in stone. So so I wouldn't put them in quite yet, but it's there will be a public meeting. It will be in mid to late January. More information is coming out about.
That's really hopeful. Thank you.
It is seven ten, which we're right on schedule for North Main Street final report and yeah.
So why don't we, if there are no other updates from the board members, why don't we jump right into that? So Brian, you are the most knowledgeable about this. So you want to jump right into where we are now and.
Sure. So this final version, hold on, this final version that was in the packet, that was the bulk of the packet, that was like over a hundred pages. You've seen versions of this. You've seen a ninety-five percent the same version of this already. And there was just this incorporated, the final comments, and I'll get there in a second. But incorporated the final comments in order to get the rest of that public process in terms of the numbers that MAPC felt was satisfactory to, you know, so that they could deliver the product that they that they felt that they they needed to deliver. So we're not gonna, so this evening, we're not going to be going into the nitty-gritty of whether, you know, what we think about about the report. I think the report is the report in terms of what the potential recommendations are. We are looking at this as a menu, but really the 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 talk of this evening is to determine what is the process. So I'm not, we're not going to go through the whole report tonight in any way, shape or form. Like it's, you know, certainly not a page by page, certainly not an edit, certainly not anything like that. We're basically going to talk about, okay, over the next season, winter into spring, what, you know, what, what, how are we going to model this? The the process as we lead up to a potential town meeting with recommendations that are born out of this report plus public participation. That's that's the combination is this report with public participation and what the planning board feels comfortable about moving forward towards the goal was fall of next year. So that's the basis or the agenda for this evening in terms of what the public process might be. And we have about forty-five minutes, so it's possible we might, you know, not take that that long at all to determine that. And then we could potentially talk about if people had questions about the report. But I think the agenda is to determine what are we going to do. So one is timing. So for something to happen in November, everything would need to be, you know, the idea would be to be buttoned up somewhere in, you know, September, you know, before September. So you like essentially before the, you know, around summer before not trying to button things up in October. That's not, you know, especially for something this large. This is a, this is a rezoning of a large of a large number of parcels to spur types of development that the town has shown that they want. So this is a big, you know, a big deal for town. So the idea is we don't want to be rushing that in October. So the question is, is that means that during January, February, March is when we kind of have to hit the gas on this if we want to go towards fall. So that's kind of where I want to start it. And the idea is, are we just going to be doing, you know, we could do, you know, there's the, you know, I think people are Zoom polled out, you know, going on to going on to Zoom and saying, and and, you know, doing sticky, you know, digital sticky notes. Although it's been useful during this time. And I think now this is, although this is only because we're not allowed to brainstorm outside of this setting. But this is really kind of a brainstorming session and trying to kind of think a little bit differently. This is, we're not looking at a permit. We're not looking at anything. This is how are we going to engage the public to do this, to do the, engage the public in order to to get the desired outcomes that the neighbors and business owners want in this area. So, yeah, DM, I feel like I've been talking for a little too long, but we, you know, we have about, you know, thirty thirty minutes to kind of talk about that. The timing, I should have said this, I'm sorry, I turned it over, but then I didn't. I'll say the timing is pretty clear. It's January, February, March. There's all and that's and then we get and then we slowly button it up as we lead towards fall, not button it up quickly in the fall.
Yeah. And the only thing I want to add to the timing is that for something like this, we probably want to have fairly solid language by the middle of summer. Because we, so we're talking about beginning and mid-June, beginning of July, so that we can get public feedback on that. Because if we get public feedback too much later, we won't really have a chance to respond or incorporate it. So we're talking about drafting final language. So that I think it speeds things up a bit. But it also gives us, you know, we can look at where we're at and determine whether at that point, whether it's still realistic to go for fall. But that I think that should be our our goal is fall. Anyway, then I, so brainstorming, I think is the right word here. So what are, what are the things we need to do before we get to writing that? Who are the stakeholders we want to communicate with? How do we want to communicate with them? What form we use? And what sort of what sort of external, I won't say authorities, but experts we might want to call in to understand some of the things like, for instance, economic development, design guidelines, all of those things are parts of this. So figuring out what sort of extra resources we might need in order to do this stuff. So those are all the big questions. So it's a free-for-all now. Just shout out your comments as you think of them.
So it seems to me that a big part of this is writing zoning code that's new. Right?
Yes, I think that is a big part. We did talk, we have spoken in the past about trying to use parts of the CBD zoning as a guideline or a framework. That could be a starting point, or could we could just start completely from scratch?
Yeah, it sounds like starting from scratch is is, well, it sounds intimidating, but.
We do have a.
Start.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a good start because we have the, we have the report, which is a number of zoning suggestions. So we could, I mean, the question is, do we dive in and start looking at the zoning suggestions first? Or do we try to take a look at what the mission statement is that came out of that report? And see if that's the way we, if we agree with that mission statement? And then we use that as the 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 foundation for what we're doing? How do we want to, we, you know, we, we need to look at what the residents' needs are. We need to look at what the businesses' needs are. We need to look at this corridor as a transportation corridor for pedestrians. Do we want to structure that so that we start looking at those individual things? You know, we have meetings on individual parts of this, which could feed into how we structure the zoning, which will feed in. So those are, you know, some ideas about how we might start. Brian's point about how we get input is key. I agree. Zoom polls are, I mean, in some way, they can be highly biased because they depend upon who shows up. And so I know I've heard from some of the residents, because I happen to live in the neighborhood, that they were unhappy with the representation of the neighborhood at these meetings. They thought it was underrepresented relative to other people. So how we get that right mix?
So the representation of the neighborhood, um, the turnout was nominally good. Because I and another volunteer did door-to-door drop-offs of flyers, but we did not go more than one or two doors down the side streets. And I think it's the side street residents that are also extremely important stakeholders in this exercise, even though they don't front on Main Street. So so communications to side street residents and property owners is one thing that we could just sort of put on a list of things to talk about. And I definitely think that we should have a deep dive conversation about the specific zoning recommendations and specific zoning changes. That's like, that's the meat of the thing. We can't do anything until we have that. And then once we have a sense of what we think we like about all that, we'll have a sense of of what consultants or professionals we might want to drag in, or not drag in, but take advantage of, you know, engage. And 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 then it seems to me that having a bunch of meetings that people can go to is a really good idea. That's what I think.
So, oh, why don't we start from a practical sense? Is how many meetings do we plan on devoting to this before, let's say, May? Are we going to doing a a meeting a month, which gives us approximately four meetings? Is that sufficient? Are we going to have more? I mean, so if we're going to be talking about, if we're going to have public hearings, and then we have to have discussions within the board, and we may need to talk to external consultants on various things. So that to me sounds like more than than four meetings. So.
DM, that leads, that leads into the resources. And, you know, one thing that MAPC had said is that they didn't think that, they said that we could certainly apply for technical assistance. So that's where we don't give any money. And they just give us, it's like a grant essentially from, you know, state dollars that get funneled through MAPC to help cities and towns. That's part of what the, you know, the regional planning councils, including MAPC and the other regions do. They funnel state money to the cities and towns in the form of technical assistance amongst many other things. So that's one we could offer, and where we could potentially get some to to do that. It's really, yeah, I think it is the number of meetings in terms of just, you know, for for public meetings, I think, is is it should should definitely be enough in terms of ones that are tailored, very specific and very, you know, targeted to to what they're doing. But certainly there will be other meetings outside of that, maybe portions of the planning board meetings. That is my, is my guessing, but that's kind of like four additional meetings. Sorry to pause here. DM, it says there's a DM Jarius in the waiting room. I'm guessing that's not you. You're not trying to.
He froze.
I guess he froze. Okay, so then this is him. Okay, I was, it was, I was unclear. So back, so back to North Main Street of the resources question. So one is technical assistance, and we also have professional services money over the next that we need to, that we that we had allocated in order to do work related to this. We have thirty thousand dollars in professional services, but as we talk, this is left currently in our budget. Because fifteen of it is supposed to be for the Holton Street, the start of the Holton Street study. So we have thirty thousand dollars left in our professional services money. As we talked about last week, you know, you gotta, we have have a cushion of about five to six or seven thousand dollars just for kind of just in case kind of money in the budget. So we're really looking at about twenty thousand dollars to spend, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars to spend. So that certainly is something that's worth talking about of whether we're gonna, what we're gonna use this money for. This is an important conversation that's obviously related to to the work we're talking about. Anyway, that's the kind of the resource question is that we have about twenty to twenty-five, let's let's call it twenty-two, twenty-two to work with plus technical assistance. If we code MAPC with twenty-two, that that's them has them more inclined to give us more technical assistance money because it's more, they they would be more inclined to match that in technical assistance time and money, meaning twenty twenty thousand dollars potentially worth. So that it's kind of a, the more you give, the more you get. So I'll stop, I'll stop there. But that's that's kind of the end of the resource conversation.
Okay, so so we have, so I think the the practical questions in front of us are delineating the resources we need, figuring out how many meetings we're going to have and what we're going to stage. And some of the trickier ones as to how we do outreach to community to the community. I don't know if I'll sell that this evening, but we'll have to figure it out. So I'm writing down notes to myself so I remember what I've said. And so why don't we? So why don't we do the first big step, which is to say we're going to have a meeting in January? And why don't we say that we're going to have a meeting mid-January? And we'll work around our ten converse thing. So I don't know that. You can set it, my calendar's not working right now, so we can set a date.
We need to get on the fourth, on January fourth, so then it'll be January eighteenth is when we would.
Yeah. So so let's tentatively say January eighteenth, we're going to have our first session on ten convert or ten converses on North Main Street. Why don't we set aside, so the question is, what topic are we going to discuss then? Do we want to? At that point, do we want to discuss the report? Is that a good place to start to look at the report, to look at the conclusions? And to use that as a framework? Or do we want to skip over that and start talking about something else, something, you know? We can use the weeks between now and then for all of us to get much more acquainted with the report and move into a particular topic?
Eeching, you started to have your hand up.
It's a different topic, so I don't want to derail you, DM.
Is it still on North Main Street?
Yeah, it is. It's just talking about more public engagement.
Okay, so, yeah, so let us, public engagement. Yeah, I got that here. Yeah. So why don't we hold on to that thought? And let's just see if we can figure out, I don't think our next meeting will have public engagement because I don't think we we need to set a framework without people to understand what what we would expect them to discuss. So.
So do you have, I think, that if we use the time between now and the eighteenth for each of us to come up with very clear understanding and suggestions, endorsements or recommendations otherwise for for specific zoning bylaw changes. And then we use the meeting on the eighteenth to to, you know, discuss those with each other in that public meeting, not a hearing, but in that meeting. Then it will also help us to understand sort of the topics to go through as part of the process. So, and Brian, help me here, but topics are things like pedestrian safety, mass transit lanes or bicycle lanes, on on street beautification, storefront revisions. I'm just, I'm grasping at straws here a little bit, but these are like the big chunky areas that we would need to be talking with the residents and the business owners about.
So it can be much more granular than than as chunky. I think we've done, there's been a lot of work that's been done by by MAPC already. So there are fifteen recommendations. This is, if you're going to focus on anything in the report, it would be, it would be this, page thirty-four. So this is obviously the summary. And then each of these fifteen recommendations go into, there's greater, much greater detail of exactly. So we don't need to have much of a brainstorming about that. The idea is using these fifteen recommendations, having the planning board. You know, at this point, it's not necessarily what the planning board's opinion is at the moment. I think the next step here is really getting a pulse on on getting a wide breadth of of people to respond to these fifteen recommendations. We have some that was part of the part, that was part of this process. Okay, but in order to get this past town meeting. But in order to get this past town meeting, this, although yes, everyone can say, okay, you know, we only need fifty-one percent now, not big of a deal. This affects a lot of people, this is serious, zoning, it it is important to to a lot of people. Um, and the idea is that, um, you know, we want to get a, uh, the, um, all the questions answered. Um, but we don't, um, the the questions in terms of the agenda for the meetings on the eighteenth, um, we don't have to come up with potential zoning, um, this, these are, these are, I mean, if you go into the report, they're, they're, they're there, they're there. Um, and, yeah, so, um, that reports, yeah, sorry, back to you.
So I, I think that, um, one of the things that would be useful for the fourteenth or the eighteenth rather is that we prioritize these recommendations. I think that presenting fifteen separate recommendations to the public or for him to comment on will not, it it will get comments from all over the place, and we certainly know that not all of these recommendations are some are ones that we would be comfortable moving forward with. So I think on the, on the eighteenth, if we draw up um, a subset of these that we think are likely to move forward, and that will help focus our, um, our work. So, why don't we, everyone by then, review all of those and, uh, we will prioritize that meeting somehow, we will come up with a scheme to so that the board has some consensus on on which ones we think are the most important. I think the, um, the other thing that can be done before then is to take a look at what sort of external resources we need to be with, need. So for instance, there is, I believe, a townwide traffic study being done, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. So, we, I don't know that we need to include extra traffic studies on North Main Street if it's already falling out of another study. Um, I think we certainly want to look at, uh, design consultants to understand how everything's going to tie together. Um, and certainly those things that Sally was mentioning are all part of design recommendations. So that would be someone else that we would, a consultant, we might want to bring in on that, somebody who has expertise in these sort of corridors, which I think are separate from, say, a town center. Um, this is an extended corridor, which is on, uh, you know, sort of like, uh, on the boundaries of residential, which I think is a different beast. So we could, um, think about who we would, so Brian, is that someone that we would get from M A P C? Do they, would we ask for those people from there, or?
So, yeah, um, you did kind of break up the major part parts here is that there's um, kind of all the dimensional requirements, the things that are easily for, easy for us to kind of go out there and say, hey, you know, what do you, um, you know, this is what happens if we allow this much more F A R or this much height. I mean, the, the, the report, the report goes into that. So that's kind of already quote written, because all you're doing is changing these numbers and getting the right, you know, sweet spot for those numbers for for us and for the town. The other side is the design standards, the design guidelines that typically are written for in, you know, somewhere essentially between, you know, maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars, something like that. Um, that's typically what it's been, or that's what it's cost in the past. Uh, I can't imagine anything less than ten thousand dollars, put it that way, I guess. And so, yeah, that's someone we would have to hire.
So that's not part of M A P C's technical assistance?
No, it it is, it's, that's probably at the, at the, that just might be a staffing issue in terms of being able to hire the exact right person. So yes, we could get somebody, but it might not be the right person based upon availability. Um, I, I do know, um, M A P C right now, uh, the, the regional planning organization is there flat out for a little bit um, in general, just because there's just a lot of planning effort, uh, that's, that is happening during, uh, you know, currently.
Okay, so that's something that, um, maybe we can look into, um, having, uh, a menu of people that we can choose from by our next meeting, who would have expertise in this particular area. Um, and the idea would be to understand the, well, we have to provide some guidance as what we would think what this area should look like, but in other, but to try to create a, um, something which reflects the unique history of this stretch of road, something which, um, makes it somewhat, has some relationship to what's going on in in the southern part of North Main Street, or whatever we call it. Um, but also, so that there is some continuity, but not something which looks like the CBD, because it's not the CBD. So it has a unique characteristic that I think everyone wants to preserve some part of. So though, I think those are two things we can, we can queue up for the eighteenth. That would.
I'd be really interested, D M, if if we could, um, come, and I think this is what you're saying, I'm not sure. Come to the meeting on the eighteenth, each of us with suggestions on outside, um, sort of town planning, design consultants that have previous experience um, both with community engagement and with really bringing up the whole corridor experience. Um, the words that come to mind are, um, like the whole complete streets concept. We have dedicated bike lanes and pedestrian safety, um, measures in in terms of the shape of the sidewalks and so on. And then the other thing would be somebody who specializes in in bringing our current zoning code into more of a, of a design based code. I know there's, um, uh, I guess that's what it's called, design-based code, Brian, there's a other model for.
I think you're talking about form, yes, but, but.
Thank you.
Sorry, but we're, we're, just to be clear, we're, we're not going out for a consultant at the moment, we're not trying to find new consultants. The idea is that this point between now and the end of the year, um, I thought that in the last meeting, we had decided we would be moving forward, um, with M A P C uh, in order to, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that was the Holton Street study, I'm now I'm getting, I'm confusing myself. Um, but I, I don't, um, we have not decided, Sally, uh, is the point um, in terms of how we're going to be getting these consultants at all. Um, we have not decided on M A P C at all, um, so that's a, that's not true, that was just for the Holton Street study. So to continue this North Main Street design guidelines and public process, um, that might be something we want to talk about in the la, in the last, whatever, we got about, um, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, um, I wanna, I hold that thought, I wanna jump back to E Ching because you had a, you had a thought about, um, public participation.
Well, I'm just thinking about the timeline, um, of getting things mostly settled by June, July. And, um, you know, the, these kinds of things, I don't, I've never had the full experience of it. And so I, you know, I've had the, the experience of a user being approached on the streets at, you know, on, at street fairs, particularly in Somerville and Cambridge, or like at the playground where these, uh, user, end user, you know, kind of community um, participation of changing the city, uh, happens. And I am imagining that kind of thing happening. Um, but, you know, June, July, there's not a lot of stuff going on. Well, I guess, you know, like farmers markets and things like that start to open up. And I just feel like these, um, public meetings at nights are, uh, bringing out very few people and probably not enough for such a big change to the town. Um, so that kind of outreach, either on the street, you know, either not, and it just seems like a lot of work. And and it's, it is also sort of, um, uh, engagement that I don't think any of us are really trained in. Um, so for us to do that is, I, I would think that we'd need expertise on that. But I, um, I'm also thinking about sort of, especially because that corridor is so much, um, uh, along the schools of Lynch and the high school, um, to engage some of the students too. And I, I don't know, this seems like a more educational thing, but like to, to even go, you know, go into this classes and and figure out how, you teach about like how to, how to plan a town. Um, and then maybe engaging in that kind of a feedback there. But I, you know, I just, I think that this, it seems like a lot of work, um, be- beyond the night meetings for meetings. So, uh, I just don't know what our resources are there.
Well, we could, we could hire a company to do that sort of market research. Right, I mean, these companies exist, I don't know how much they cost, I don't know what sort of directions we need to give them, but, um, certainly. Yeah, I, it all depends, maybe that's, that's also something that we could look into before the eighteenth is, is what sort of who those people are, who we might hire to do this, what sort of consultant services those are.
Getting the pulse of, I, I think somebody's used that phrase about how the town would react to it. I would think that some of that, getting a bigger swath of input or even going into a lot of these precinct meetings, I guess, um, especially town meeting members and start to engage, uh, you know, would be, would be key in the presentation and passing of any of this.
Um, just to talk briefly, thank you for that, E Ching. I think what I'm hearing is that it's, it's really maybe more of a March, April, May public participation to try to get more interesting, um, you know, feedback other than the classic night Zoom meeting that everyone is, you know, very familiar with. Um, so that's what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm seeing a couple of people now, but may, maybe the timeframe for, for all of that is March, April, May with, 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 you know, something towards the middle of end of March, and then just, you know, people are gonna be dying to get outside anyway uh, in general, so, um, it's just kind of aligning, aligning that. So that, that's good in terms of timing, that allows, that allows, you know, a scope to be drawn up and kind of figure out how that's going to happen. Um, since this is gonna be under thirty thousand dollars, all we would need to do would be to get three quotes so we don't need to do, you know, a long drawn-out R F P. Um, it's essentially getting three quotes, uh, or soliciting three quotes, uh, for, based on a scope. Um, so I can certainly hone in on what we would really want, um, out of some type of a design consultant. I really think the end of the day, it's our legal counsel that they would be working with. So we wouldn't hire someone else to be drafting, I don't think. I think what we would be doing is we would hire a design consultant to help us do the, the design standards, design guidelines, um, give more than just hints at that, but it's someone who does that, but then the, um, uh, with an architecture background, um, you know, that's typically what we were looking for i- in, and found that in, in Josh Fiala and M A P C. Um, we kind of lucked out there, uh, in terms of his experience and what, what he was, and I, you know, I, it's unclear if we would get him again, and, and that's not really what I'm necessarily saying what we should do. The point is, is that it's not like we would be hiring an additional person to to draft or to do legal, we would be hiring in someone who does design guidelines, and then Anderson and Krieger would be kind of finishing that up.
And possibly someone to do outreach.
Um, yeah, well, it could be a firm that we hire that does, that does, that does both of those, correct?
Yeah, the very last thing you said, yeah, it seems like it makes a lot of sense, because the outreach part is perhaps um, emerging as one of the most difficult parts that if people felt like they needed to be heard more, if they wanted to um, have a voice more, that outreach and engagement is a really important part of this. So, yeah, getting a professional that does that.
Yeah, I, I just, um, Brian, you say that there are, um, companies which do both, I, I will, but I'm not, I, I know nothing of this field. So if we can find someone who does both, in my mind, it seems like those are two separate things that one can be good at, but I guess if you can chew gum and walk at the same time, that's great. So why don't we, um, I think in order to start thinking about getting this outreach in, in in spring, we do need to, um, think about, you know, we, we need to make a decision as to who we're going with. Uh, I would imagine by early February at the latest, because we need to know availability. Um, so I think we still need, I think for the next meeting, we're still gonna be looking at, trying to see who this, this, wh- what, what the consultants are, who are the, the, the entities that we would be, um, talking to by next, we would need to have that by next, our next meeting, just to keep things on track. So, we, we have sort of a schedule. We have, uh, I think we have ten minutes left according to my talk, my, my clock here. So we're gonna start ranking, um, the suggested zoning bylaw changes that are in this report. We're gonna talk about consultants. And I think if we if we hold it like a meeting and a half a month, so that we're talking about maybe three hours per month to talk this through, I don't, I don't, you know, that is, I think what we can afford at this point in our, if we don't go outside of our existing meetings. Although we do have ten converse, which will be coming much more fast and furious as the weeks move on. So, we may be having special meetings to deal with this.
Is the question, is the question, yeah.
Poker faces on right now.
Well, yeah, is the question whether or not there's going to be, uh, you know, you know, this is really more of a scheduling question in general, what do we want to be doing, January, February, March and April? Is do we want to be sticking to every other week, and then everything on top of that is what would be considered an extra meeting? Um, that was what we had done, and we basically, we, we calendared out several extra meetings for ten converse. Uh, there is an election in, uh, March, um, so at, at that point, uh, you know, it's unclear, uh, what would happen with ten converse in general. Um, but the idea is that there's still really a lot more there in the April, April and May is going to be a lot more of the work of this, of this job, uh, this project, if we're looking towards fall. So it, um, potentially could be one or two different, uh, members of the planning board at the, at that time. Um, but I would say that it's a question, the question is how many extra meetings outside of normal of two a month? If two, if two per month is base, how many more extra meetings are people willing to do uh, during the January through April, and January through May timeframe, one, you know, January through May?
Well, I, I can speak and say that I'm willing to have three meetings a month, but I'm also not the one who's working a full-time job with children at home. So I think that the other members of the board need to chime in with what they feel is realistic. I do think that targeting February first, which is the Tuesday in February, that is the every other week date after the January meetings, what is it, like the fourth and then the, I lost my calendar, the, the, the fourth and then the eighteenth, and then two weeks after that is the first. So if we know that there's certain things that we really have to have in place by February, we want to really make sure we accomplish them in January, you're like in, either in those two meetings or in an extra one. And so it, it, not just having like in a conversation about the number of meetings, but the specific deliverables that we need to hit um, in order. You know, like the game board.
So why don't, um, we've got five minutes left, so I don't, there's, that's, I think you've laid out an important point, as we do need to write down what the agendas will be for each of these upcoming meetings, what we have to schedule. So why don't, um, why don't we do some of this offline? So, um, if you have, um, ideas about which what the order is of things we should talk about, um, or how we, what we schedule our meetings in, please send them to Brian. I, I want to point out that we do have a plan to have a, to be able to make a decision on ten converse by mid-February. So that kind of sunsets some of the extra time we would be spending on ten converse. We wanted to get that done plenty of time prior to elections in March. So, um, we may be very busy in January, but, um, depending on how the decision goes on ten converse, that could free up, um, time after, you know, beginning at the end of February. So, um, any other comments on on this? Uh, Cheryl, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a thought that may not. That may just be way off base here, but. This is, this is an effort that is about reaching out and. One of the things that I felt was kind of underpinning the master plan implementation committee was actually. The idea that we do start to expand. Things that we're working on or use that committee to extend our reach. In terms of the master plan, and I know that North Main Street, if I'm not mistaken, was in the master plan. So I think that. You know, if the master plan implementation committee. I I just, I kind of wonder where where are we with that and would this be a good first thing to work on? As a way to kind of spread out the the outreach aspect of. North Main Street.
So there there are. Two questions, I think there. One is where are we with the mass plan implementation committee? The the answer to that is nothing has changed. We we had a discussion about it last week. And so you know, gave me the go ahead to start writing letters to all these people and. That has not happened, so I hopefully I will get to that shortly. I don't imagine that. They will be up to speed sufficiently to provide us input by the time we need it for this project. Unless we decide that next that we can't make this schedule of getting to town meeting by next fall. I just, I I think I I completely agree with where you're going on this, Cheryl. I just don't know if the schedule allows it. Because.
So I guess one of the things I'm thinking is that. If if we're going to narrow in on the things that are most important. For zoning or for the planning board in the North Main Street study, you know, we can't take it all on, right? So would it be helpful if? If, yeah, I I guess I I just kind of feel like. It's it's a lot to make a choice. On what we're going to work on and then go out, put it out there and then, you know. Just push really hard on some things that maybe other committees and other groups. Working, you know, the volunteer circuit in Winchester could be. Kind of identifying the things that could be most successful in town meeting. In terms of North Main Street. It it's, I I think the study is really well done. I want to thank. You know, everybody that worked on it. I it looks really good and it's a great document with a lot of nice graphics and things that we can share. Easily with people so and. It just seems that we have a lot. We have, we have a lot of decisions to make on breaking it down into what we want to do for next fall, so.
No, I I agree. I just, in terms of the master plan implementation committee. You know, in order to get, I I would be very surprised if we actually got the committee together before February. Just in terms of getting everyone on there. So we were looking at them meeting monthly. So bringing them up to speed, getting, I mean, maybe this is a good thing to give them an initial. Focus, but even then, I'm just wondering how much they will be able to accomplish before. We need to put pen to paper. So I think we can, I don't see that. Any of this precludes hoping that they will be able to provide some useful input. So we can. Work on getting the the committee going. And as things go, we will adjust what we do based on how that works out.
In the one, in the one minute that we have, I just, just I guess to recap super, super quick. You know, for the eighteenth, I think it's really, one is it is, you know, looking at those fifteen recommendations and and think about. You know, possible things that. You think that you at least agree with. I I think that's at least, that's pretty. You know, that we should, you should just do that exercise yourself, you know. That that's certainly homework that should be done because I think that that kind of forms what we're trying to do. If some of them are just, you know, develop design guidelines, you know, that is, that is certainly a a, you know, that is a project there. The other thing for the eighteenth. DM might have to help me on here. I just want to button this up super quick before.
We're talking about consultants. What sort of resources, what sort of, you know, looking at who we could hire for marketing research as well as design consultants?
Yeah, and. Yeah, I guess that's it.
Those were the two things and and that if each of us can come to the appropriate next meeting. I'm not sure if it's the fourth or the eighteenth with. Names of firms that ideally do both. Town planning, you know, corridor revitalization and revisioning and the neighborhood outreach element of that, which is. I have to say that must be integral to their work, then we can maybe have somebody on board by February first.
And and the other thing is to understand how M A P C's technical services work. What what are they? How they, how they? How we can make use of them and. I'm I'm still a little confused as to what it is that they would provide, but I can, I can talk with that to Brian about that offline, so. Okay, I think that we have now, we are slightly. Behind schedule by about two minutes, so why don't we move on to the next part of our agenda? And in this part, we are reopening our hearing. On the CBD petition number fourteen for the development of ten Converse Place. This evening, we are slated to go over the initial traffic review. By tool. And Brian, do you want to lead us off on that?
Sure, thanks, Devois. Yeah, the, just a quick note for this evening in terms of the agenda. So in addition to the traffic study, Erica Guidaboni is, as you can see, is here from Tool Design. Who. Wrote the report and is here for any potential initial questions. And then after that, there is a floor plan that was submitted with the packet. That would be the remainder of the of the time for this evening. And then if that is finished. And then we can potentially open it up to other questions, but I believe we only have forty five minutes. So the idea is that. Erica would be able to present her report. And and we can kind of go from there. Just to be clear, the applicant has not had the opportunity to met with the peer reviewer. Typically, that initial report is, if we had more time, we might have been able to have them have a sit down outside of the meeting. They could have potentially resolved some more issues, but we didn't have time for that. That's typically how we've done it previously. We just, so this is a little. Not normal for us or other or other boards and committees, to be honest. So just sorry for the long winded opening, but Erica. I can put the report up if you'd like, or if you just kind of want to summarize for five or kind of whatever you feel is appropriate for this initial meeting. Go for it. Thanks so much for being here, Erica.
Thank you, Brian. I actually have just a handful of slides there. Really just a tool for me, so they're not particularly beautiful. Oh, I don't have ability to share. I can jump through. I can speak if. If it's too much of a challenge to allow me to share.
You should be able to go for it.
Ah, there it is. Thank you. Ask and you shall receive. A moment. All right, I've got it up in a PDF form, but hopefully this. Everyone can see that. So thank you, members of the board, for having me here this evening. My name is Erica Guidaboni. I'm at Tool Design Group. And I performed a transportation peer review of the ten Converse Place project. Specifically, I looked at the. Transportation impact study that was conducted by Howard Stein Hudson. It was dated in August and we really, I really put a focus on safety, pedestrian access and loading and curb use, which I think are. Some key elements that come into play when you're talking about the, you know, the downtown nature of this project. My review was actually submitted yesterday, so as Brian stated, we haven't had an opportunity to communicate directly with Howard Stein Hudson and the proponent. And, you know, Brian just received my final, my final review yesterday, so this is pretty preliminary at the moment. I also took a look at the transportation related elements of the site layout plans that were done by Fields Associates. I have heard word that the Wurthorf is no longer part of this development and therefore. I did not provide full comment on the the layout plans and I look forward to reviewing the revised plans that removed the Warner so that I can. Give further comment in that regard. Apologies, this is a little wordy. But my findings are that the the transportation impact study was certainly accurate, error free. And was performed to industry and local standards. It appropriately measures the transportation impacts related to the vehicle trips on the nearby roadway network as associated with the. Change in the project site land use and building. And notably, it actually has a minor change in peak hour trips and it actually. Is set to have a negative impact on, or excuse me, negative trips in the peak hour in the morning and only four trips in the evening. Having said all that, I think where I wanted to really focus is a little bit more on some of the things that were not included. And where I'd like to see some more information to continue to do my review as thoroughly as possible. So while the vehicular impacts, I think were really well stated and are pretty clear to be fairly negligible for this project. I'm anticipating there will be an increase in pedestrian activity associated with the change of this of this building. Having residents come in, that's going to have, you know, more people, especially in the evening, walking to the various restaurants and shops. And the new restaurant space in there. So while while their vehicular trips are not particularly different, I do think that the pedestrian activity is going to increase, which is a good thing. We also want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about access and safety when that change occurs. So as I mentioned, some of my initial findings, I'm really just looking for more information right now. Which, as Brian stated, we weren't able to have that conversation and kind of come to the board today with a little bit more of a flushed out conversation that had taken place. But I don't feel prepared to comment necessarily on. Sorry, curb use, curbside use along Converse Place specifically. The loading, the trash, the move in, move out activities, those are all things that I need more information on to really understand. And ensure that this review is thorough, so I've made that request officially in my in my review that was submitted yesterday. And then additional information around the safety analysis, the severity of the crashes was not reported. And site distance and sight lines associated with that that driveway. Additionally, we're just looking at mitigation measures. You know, these are things that the the development is proposing to do. To sort of offset any of the impacts that they're having in the area around with the with the new building. And while they've committed to rebuilding the sidewalk on Mount Vernon Street right along their their frontage. I'd like to see a little bit more related to the safety and access for people, for the increase in activity levels for people on foot around the site. So next steps, I'm looking forward to a response to comments. From my memorandum that was submitted, having a conversation with the proponent, looking at an updated site plan that removes the Wurthorf. And returning back to the board in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you. It was a great summary. Thank you. So. Does the board have any questions? And I am not seeing much interest or much in. Evidence for questions. Why don't we turn it over?
Sally, sorry, Sally has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sally. I didn't see you down there.
No, that's okay. And and I actually really appreciate all the work that went into this, Erica. And I read it really fast, but really closely, really fast. And so there's some technical things in here that I hope it's not standard planning board member. Habit to understand and I can ask you and Brian about those to explain them better. But I do see that there. Is one thing about the auto turn analysis entering and. Exiting the garage. And what is an auto turn analysis?
Great question. So that is a vehicle envelope. You would utilize. CAD software, so computer computer automated design software. And you essentially would lay out what a turning truck would look like going in and out of the site. And around that kind of tighter corners around the driveway, around Converse Place at Mount Vernon Street, ensuring that you're not putting. You know, bollards or parked cars or trees in a space that a that a that a vehicle or a trash truck needs the space to navigate. Effectively in that kind of tight area. So that was the intention is to get some further detail on how. Trucks and vehicles will access the the site on Converse Way. I'm sorry, Converse Place.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, really just focusing on all of your requests and recommendations, I thought it was really. Helpful to see the number of things that you cited as being. You know, spot on, you know, in terms of professional practice and so on, and then to identify the things that you definitely needed more information about. I think you're. Right, that the pedestrian. Aspect of this is transformative, but then again, it makes sense because what does revitalizing downtown mean? It means more pedestrians. So I think that it's a really helpful study and I hope that. The team is able to get you what you need quickly enough that we can get what we need quickly enough to make a decision quickly enough. That's all I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Erica. I. I was wondering if you guys have calculations for variables and say whether. Snow removal or, you know, pedestrian access during that kind of a thing that's included in your study?
Referring to pedestrian activity levels when there's.
Yeah, more snow removal kind of an issue or like kind of. I guess it's mostly just snow, really.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I think that's really a access and maintenance kind of question related to the. Property manager. I would imagine that they're going to have a a plan for for salting and snow removal in terms of snow storage. That's another question. I think DPW would want to ensure that they're comfortable with them with the plowing operations associated with any of this modifications on Converse Place as well.
Okay, and one more question. I too read it really quickly, but is there an understanding of the the mechanisms of the garage? Automated garage?
Yeah, that's fairly similar to the, I actually reviewed these six fifty four Main Street development as well. And we got a little bit of familiarity on that. I did make a request for some of the dimensions related to the queuing area. I actually feel fairly comfortable that. That the space provided is going to be sufficient for the 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 space here. The question is, do the vehicles have space to get kind of out of the way of the path of travel on Converse Place while they're waiting for the garage? Or are they going to be in the street? And I don't have that answer at the moment because the dimensions were not provided sufficiently. On the site plan. So that is a question that I currently have that I don't have an answer to at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Last time I said, okay, somebody raised their hand, so. Let me try again. Why don't we turn it over to Admiral Yora? And if you guys have a, or you, I'm sorry, you folks have a quick response. I I recognize that this is an iterative process. And it's really early days, so I don't think we can hold you to. And it's really early days, so I don't think we can hold you to a official detailed response at the moment, but why don't you take a couple of minutes?
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ian Gillespie here, and as always, Erica has done a great job. We, I went through expecting, you know, problems. I have a check mark. I hope my partners won't kill me next to virtually every one of her comments. And she's right. The, the issue here, interestingly, is not vehicular traffic. It's, it's pedestrians. And that area of town is not particularly great for pedestrians. So we do have Melissa Restrepo here from HSH, Howard Stein Hudson. And Melissa, I don't know if you have a quick comment or not. I know you're going to be sending a response back to Erica and then we'll all get together over Zoom, something like that with Brian, I hope.
Hi, yes. Oh, yeah. So like, like they said, we just received the report last night. So we weren't able to really get a full on comprehend the entire report, but, but I've read so far seems that we'll be able to, you know, resolve all the issues. And if anything, we'll meet with Erica separately too. And we can, you know, talk more about how we can resolve these issues and put them back into the responses.
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, Erica, I thought it was great. You know, you, you focus correctly on crosswalks and things that are actually going to be impacted by the project. So thank you very much. And we'll come back to you. I see Cheryl has commented.
Yeah, it's raised a question in my mind, Erica, about bikes seem to be talked about in one aspect and then people in another. But quite frankly, this is really, one of the, the great assets here is that it's connecting the bike path. You know, from Main Street to the other side of Mount Vernon and, and, but that also with commercial pedestrian access means that bikes and, and people are sort of sharing the public way. Is that something that you saw adequately resolved in terms of safety as well? I know there was talks about bike storage and things like that, but I don't know that I reading it quickly if I picked up on that.
Yeah, I'm actually very impressed that everyone has been able to at least somewhat digest my memo in such brief time. So appreciate that very much. Yeah, I think we had talked about ensuring that the width of that connection, they're kind of providing that missing link between the tri-community bike path or walkway to the, to the north on Mount Vernon to the other side of Main Street. Ensuring that it's wide enough for all users, I think is something that's pretty important here. In terms of bike facilities, I think we've always had this challenge in Winchester. Actually, you don't have a overall bike plan. We did look at the road book and there was no mention of a desire for bike lanes on Mount Vernon Street at the moment. I do think that setting a focus on traffic calming and kind of slowing vehicles in general. I think the, the general consensus thus far has been that it's a short of a shared space that is supposed to be comfortable for everyone. So I think the intention here is that we just want to make the, we want to make sure that there's sufficient sightlines and traffic is slowed more than specifically having separate space for bicyclists. It is an interesting point when you say separated out people and bikes. The thing is that it's a person on a bike. So I sometimes say person. And I really mean like anybody that's not, you know, in a vehicle is a, you know, a vulnerable roadway user that is, you know, accessing the site and needs to be, feel safe.
Yeah, I just, I just see access to the edge of the pond. And the fact that this development is really trying to bring the public to the pond as an amenity. And I know that Ian, your design team has really looked at in, in a very sophisticated way, how to create an amenity there. But if you're crossing people, if people are crossing from commercial space across a bike path to, you know, a leisure area in front of the pond. I think, I think your landscape team just needs to be know that, you know, we need to look at that more carefully.
I, I couldn't agree more. There's an awful lot going on at the corner of Converse by the pond. And I think that's really, that's also true as a if we keep Converse traffic the way it is, that also is a problem as they exit on the main vehicular traffic. But yes, we have a lot going on there. Fortunately, I think you're familiar with John Copley. And I think we have, you know, as, as good as there is in the business to, to address that, but you're right. We, we will focus on that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to, you know, program a lot of different things that everybody wants, but with the safety, as Erica's pointed out, is, is our, is our responsibility here.
Right. We also want to work with Erica, and I don't know if she knows this yet. Converse Place, the, the concept of the direction of the flow of traffic on Converse Place has come back and forth. And it's kind of still unresolved. The, you know, the biggest issue there is, is DPW, the town. What they want, particularly with the sensitivity of the the public safety on Mount Vernon directly opposite. But there is, you know, we want to look at those two intersections and see which makes most sense for the entrance and exit for Converse. It may flip around.
So sorry, just to be super clear there, your, there's conversations and consideration associated with the directionality of Converse Place. So having the one-way direction flip to a eastbound, northbound instead of a southbound, westbound?
It's been discussed internally with us when we did the Wunorf, it seemed to work best that way. But this was very preliminary and obviously Beth Rudolph is the first stop. She also happens to be acting town manager at the minute. So it's quite easy. And then ultimately, of course, the select board is responsible for that. But at some point, we want to, it, it's a, it's, we, we probably have three or four weeks ahead of us here to look at that issue and see which is the better flow from a safety point of view. The entrance where the flow from Converse on the main at the moment, a right-hand turn is immediately into a pedestrian crosswalk. The left-hand turn is crossing in traffic that just got released by a light and is running over a bridge. So it's, you know, we have to look at it and see what you guys, the scientists, say about this.
Yeah, I'm very curious to hear about that conversation.
Yeah, you know, and, and we want to involve, obviously, that's town's decision, first the engineering and then select board.
Did DPW have initial responses to that? We don't have
Forgive me, we didn't, you know, we didn't
We haven't talked, we haven't talked about it in this hearing yet.
I appreciate the preview.
Yeah, thank you. The, the drop off of the building technically works obviously better if if it exits at Mount Vernon, but that's the least for, choose, public safety is a better question.
So, Diab, I have another question that I, I feel like it's related, but I don't know if it is, which is parking. That I know that this peer review doesn't dive into the issues of the impact of the, the whole program on town parking. And so my question would be, at what point and by what means do we have a way to have some assessment of that?
Well, so the zoning does specify the required number of spaces for this. And I think that this project exceeds the requirement of the zoning. So in terms of the if it meets the zoning, I'm not sure how much further we can talk about parking impacts. The key question is, I think, how does the commercial parking work?
Yeah, what I, I think I, what I realized, my thought is triggered partly by Brian having up that aerial view of Converse where it turns the bend and connects with Maine. And I have seen, and maybe Erica has seen this too, that if cars park outside of China Sky near to the pond there, anywhere even vaguely distant from the curb, that trucks are not able to exit there. And so one would think that an obvious thing to do, and I think Erica made mention of this, was to not have parking on one side or the other, or change the parking configuration on the public ways in some way. And, you know, our poor town is struggling with the diminishment of public parking spaces on the street already. So I just want to make sure that we all have a chance to look hard and think hard about how we can make the impact of the additional traffic on Converse not require a loss of public parking spaces. But I don't know if it's possible. So that's my reason in bringing it up. It was less about residential parking because as you said, yeah, we're way over the, or not way, but we are over the zoning.
So I think the difficulty here and the same difficulty that we ran up against at 654 Main is that those decisions are outside of this board's power to make any decisions. I think I said that backwards. The point is, this is a select board issue. And I think that Erica's suggestion of putting in the auto turn, understanding how, what the, what sort of paths are required for safety is something that will come out of this, I, I think the ongoing studies. And at that point, there's possibly something the board can recommend to the select board in terms of what might be appropriate, but that's about as far as we can go. I mean, we just, it's, I mean, I think one of the concerns is where are the loading zones? Are, are the loading zones, are there times in which it's appropriate to, to use them? I mean, these are the same, you know, those are things that will come out. But unless the, the, the select board agrees with those decisions and implements them, that's about as far as we can go. Brian, please.
So I just wanted to say what's kind of at the heart of this, and this is what has already been kind of born out of this mini-traffic study that's through the Downtown Improvement Action Plan. That's also being done by Tool Design. Is the heart of this is enforcement. So the idea is that we have a parking ratio of a certain, of a certain number. It's already been determined that the residential units of from 60 is, is going down. So there's no doubt that they will be overparked even with the two required commercial. So that's not in terms of what, what's required by the zoning and what's they're providing is they're still overparked, period. Even with accounting for two commercial spaces. Really, the question, Sally, that you're talking about is this ancillary parking question of, 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 you know, third cars or fourth cars or whatever might be happening potentially in that building or repairmen and women, that type of thing. The idea is that there's going to be 30-minute parking. There's going to be two-hour parking, three-hour parking more. And if, and it's going to be enforced. That's going to be the future of town center parking as we, as we go into the next several years is, is good enforcement. So it's not going to necessarily be an issue because people won't be able to park for longer than 30 minutes in a 30-minute spot. Or two minutes or two hours in a two-hour spot or three hours in a three-hour spot. And it's just going to be the nature of what is allowed to be, to be in the town center is that if you want to live in town center, you're having one car. Or you could potentially, one of the recommendations that Erica had made, same recommendation from 654 was to allow unbundling of the parking spaces so that if someone doesn't need a parking space, they can sell to another, or they can rent it really to another person in the building. They'd have to be in the building. They wouldn't be renting it to someone outside of the building. So that, that's what's just the reality is enforcement and potential unbundling.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. We have approximately 15 minutes. We wanted to take some time to dive into layouts and unit distribution. So if we are all done with parking, last chance to talk about, I'm sorry, parking, last chance to talk about transportation. Okay, we're going to park that subject for a while. Thank you much, Erica. Thank you, Melissa. Good to hear from you both. And we will undoubtedly hear more from you in the future. So why don't we slide on over to Brian? You want to pop up some diagrams of layouts?
Yeah, I think I'll pop that up and I'll, I'll let Ian kind of talk about what he's heard from the board. And I also, I did see earlier, and he is John Serbeer of the Housing Partnership Board is here. So this is going to be kind of going back to the unit mix and definitely, you're talking about potential, potential livability of the units and what these units are going to look like. Affecting that ground floor looking up. So this does kind of affect what the end result of the building will look like. So yeah, in this next, it looks like, oh, we do have a hard stop at 8:40 because this, this is also being heard for Conservation Commission tonight, 10 Converse Place. So we're, that way the ability to, to go, for people to go to that at 8:40. So I'm going to bring this up right now. And I'll turn it over to Ian.
We do have such a talented team. We have a couple of people covering that one too. But thank you very much. And Rob Clocker is here. If we need his assistance. I should mention that at the moment, Jan Steenbergen and Paul Sutley, my colleagues and partners are also on with us, necessary. This, this was done fairly quickly. The, the, I mean, I, I, I don't mean to minimize the work. The work is terrific. This is probably a pretty good representation, but we know that the building is still moving around. What we were really dealing with here in the, in the main was the question of how many units it makes sense. And this is roughly where we think it's right. It's somewhere around 45, 46 units. And the key question for this, for us was, does this still meet the housing partnership sense of what diversity of housing should look like? So John is on with us, but, and I don't want to speak for him. I did take the liberty of sending it to him at the tail end of last week. And so he has had at least an opportunity to see it, not study it. The labeling here, this was, the, the, the third plan from the left is the third floor plan, which is replicated for the fourth floor. So, and then the last one over is the fifth floor. So this goes from the left, first, second, third and fourth, and then the fifth. So we just wanted to see what they were looking like, if the mix still was the right mix. And as the building changes shape and as we talk it through, we expect this to change yet again. So this is in no way final. It's just representation of where we think we are today.
If I could just make, ask a quick question. Could you explain what a one-plus and a two-plus bedroom unit is?
Yeah, I think Rob's right there with the answer.
Yeah. Well, we, we, we recognize that there was, because we're only showing the unit boundaries, we're not showing the internal layout. There was some concern and confusion earlier about whether there was enough window frontage for the number of bedrooms illustrated. And these are relatively deep units. And so there are additional rooms which could count as a workroom or a sleeping room that are not on the window face. And instead of calling them a bedroom, we actually just illustrate them as a plus. So for example, a one-plus bedroom has a bedroom on the glass and an additional room of equal size that is back in the depth of the unit. Ideally with, we often do these with glazed doors and things, so they do borrow light from the main unit, but we're not calling them bedrooms. They're a bonus room.
Okay, thank you.
It could be a bedroom, though, right?
But they could be.
Yeah, legally, it could be a bedroom.
I thought legally you had to have an exit from a bedroom.
Not in a multifamily building that's sprinkled with exit stairs. They, they don't, the windows don't even have to be operable technically.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense.
And I also thought legally you have to have a window to the exterior immediate.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, that, that is true in the, in the residential code for a house or for a two-family dwelling, but for a multifamily, as you could imagine, you know, multifamily extends even to high-rise buildings where having a window wouldn't help you because the trucks aren't that tall. And so what the code does is it provides other safety factors which are the buildings required. And so what the code does is it provides other safety factors which are the buildings required to be fire sprinkled. It is required to have two full legal exits. And that's how the people are rescued from the building, not through the windows.
So I don't, I don't see any square footages here for bedrooms are, are these comparable to what you've shown in the past, or are they maybe a little bit smaller? Not sure.
The intent was to follow the standards we had in the past and we do have preliminary unit plans. We just have not fleshed them out because the building has been changing. But also to, to the, the marketing of the building, the, the size of the bedrooms wants to keep to the original program. So that when they go to sell the units, they do have the, the size of the bedrooms that we always did.
So I have, I have one question or two actually about these diagrams. One is that on the first floor, the, I guess it would be the south commercial space, the pond facing one still appears to me to be somewhat narrow and it's a little bit narrower than I think what was shown when we were looking at the conceptual diagrams last time, where we were looking at the location of the lobby and so on. And I realized that I think the reason that it looks narrow is because the middle unit on the ground floor is wider because it's now a two bedroom. And my thought was it might make the commercial space more viable, more saleable, more usable, to not narrow it by inserting a wider unit in the middle there. So that's just one thought I had. And then the other thought that I have is that I don't think that the idea of three bedroom units in this building is necessarily a good idea. I think that we have a lot of large luxury condominium opportunities in town. And that keeping the units at two bedrooms, I'm seeing two plus, which means you have an interior study or den or something. But it, it just seems like we might be able to meet the needs of the town more directly by distributing that square footage across the other unit types to meet the needs of our community. So those were the two comments that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are helpful. The, the commercial space is certainly something that will get fleshed out when we get more precise. There was, we did not intend to show it smaller, but Ian should answer anything about the unit mix if there's a concern.
I suppose I'd like to get through the figuring out what the heck the building is for a while and make sure our, we're considered, we have diversity. The three bedroom, there are a lot of people trying to downsize and for better or for worse. I've, I've done this myself. You have a lot of large houses in, in Winchester. So a three bedroom in this kind of community is not unusual at all. I'm not sure if you have a lot of this downtown walking to the station. And so I, I, I just pause for the moment, but you know, I suggest we get the, the skin of the building squared away and we can certainly take it under advisement, but I think there's reason to have three bedrooms here. And if I'm not mistaken, the, and I, I, again, I don't want to quote Mr. Subir out of context. I think he may have said that there was a benefit to having, you know, an affordable three bedroom.
So I actually want to bring John Serbeer into the conversation. We have five minutes left. We do have a hard stop. So if the board is okay with the board, I'd like to bring John in to give a couple of minutes where he talks about what, how he feels about this new layout and then we can come back and if there are any comments from the board. So John, can you give us a, a one and a half minute? I'm cutting out your time even further. Summary?
Yeah, am I on now?
You are on.
Okay, uh, well, two of us from the Housing Partnership Board looked at this, I think over the weekend after Ian sent it to us. The, the full Housing Partnership Board, it was distributed to the full Housing Partnership Board. We're going to discuss it tomorrow night. And I said I would provide Ian with some comments on Thursday. The initial reaction is that this is a, a significant improvement over the previous layout. Some of the issues that, that we, that we identified or the issues that we've identified have been addressed in there regarding, you know, three bedroom units. I think if, if one of those could be made an affordable unit, as Ian just implied, that's going to be important and acceptable to, to DHCD. And we can look at the, they may have some questions on the, the number of three bedroom units. And we can talk, we can ask tomorrow, you know, what people's preferences are regarding, you know, limiting to only two bedroom units or having some three bedroom units. And we had the same question that Cheryl did is, you know, it'd be nice to look at the, to see the layout of the individual units and to see the square footage. In there, we thought before with sixty units, some of the, like, some of the units were, were getting to be pretty small for this kind of a development. But in general, our reaction was, the initial reaction, the early returns from the voting were positive.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for being very, very concise there. Any, so I'm going to open it up to the board. Any other comments, E Ching or Kurt? Go ahead, E Ching.
I also want to commend the team. I think it, it looks really viable. The bedroom layout, I can sort of just see how it would feel comfortable, more comfortable than the previous layouts. And I would counter Sally's, I, I think that an affordable three bedroom would be amazing. I think, you know, three bedrooms would accommodate families and I, I, it would be a shame to not be able to have families live in this building. So I, I think that would be an exclusive and unfortunate thing to happen. So an affordable three bedroom would be amazing.
To very, very quickly talk about that, if it's only one or two of the forty something units, if only one or two of them are three bedroom, it's unlikely that DHCD would require that to be an affordable. It's a question of once that starts to get more than one or two, then, then DHCD will probably, you know, will, will, they may require it. All, all, all I'm saying is that if it's only one or two, it's likely that they would not require it to be affordable. If it's more than that, they, they might.
So I think in the interest of time, I think it will be great to hear back from the Housing Partnership Board in their conversations with DHCD and amongst their board members about this question. And one, one question that I would like to put on the table is whether there's any possibility of, of or, or I would like to suggest that we explore the possibility of having more than the minimum number of required units in this building, required affordable units. If there's forty five units, the diagrams depict forty one. But if there's forty five units, then I think there would be at, at the ten percent plus five percent, Brian, that would be.
It's eight, I believe. It would be fi- five affordable because it would be four and a half, so it'd be five affordable at eighty, eighty and below. And, and two and a half, but really three affordable at eighty to one.
So that's eight. So I just, just knowing that when we talk about subsidized housing inventory in our town, there's a big difference about condominiums versus rental units because of the way that the counting is done with the DHCD. And that when we have a rental building like is being proposed at Washington Swanton or is being pursued at Washington Swanton, a hundred percent of the units count towards our subsidized housing inventory, SHI, as opposed to a condominium building where only the ones that are deed restricted condos for specific area median income limits or count towards the SHI. And what I'd like to know is the feasibility of increasing the five percent at eighty to one twenty and the ten percent at eighty percent AMI to a number that is substantially higher, like even twenty five percent of the units in the building being designated to some degree of affordability. That level of impact on the town might be a really positive thing to have, and that's my comment.
Just to get out in the front of that, that, to make that twenty five percent would make this a forty B, I would, that, that makes no, I'll be, I'm just going to be very direct here. That it doesn't make any sense for the, for any project to go outside of twenty five percent in order to, out of the quote goodness of their heart. They could just override all of, all of our zoning. Yeah, I mean, that's what triggers. You, you, you're talking about a traditional forty B in terms of you're saying you're requiring a traditional forty B. It's a totally different conversation.
I, I, I want to unfortunately, because we do have a hard stop at eight forty. It's now eight forty one.
Yeah, no, we do.
I, I, these are, it's, 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 it's an idea I think we will have to discuss at our next meeting. And at this point, I think we need to schedule our next hearing. Our next, the next meeting of this board will be on January the fourth. And I think by that point, we should probably have, well, I'm not going to say, Brian, what do you think we'll have by next?
There's going to be, there's going to be a meeting with the design consultant before the new year, that meeting, the agenda is to kind of compare notes of, of what we've all been hearing in terms of the design consultants and the architects. And kind of map out the, the, the schedule for, for, and the goals for, for January. So I don't think that there's going to be a lot for the January fourth is my guess. Ian, but I don't want to speak for you in terms of if you had other things, but my guess is really it's closer to the January eighteenth to have more important dialogue. But Ian, I don't know what you thought, but I was thinking continuing to the eighteenth might, might make the most sense to get work done.
I, I'm always reluctant not to have a placeholder in case we have questions from Mr. Chen. But if, suppose we were to do ten minutes on the fourth, just in case we have a threshold question. One of the threshold questions, I think we now know the FAR. I think we now know the entrances on Mount Vernon. I think we now know where the commercial spaces are. So we're starting to get some clear direction now, which is very helpful. But if we had a threshold question, I'd love to have an opportunity to just ask the board, but no more than ten minutes, something that's threshold. And then we can, happy to go on to the next meeting after that. And if you don't want to do that, that's fine too.
I think we can certainly do that. I think that's reasonable. So why don't we continue this meeting to our standard eight o'clock time on January the fourth? Someone make a motion on that and we will limit it to say fifteen minutes, just ensure that we have enough time.
I'm moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Kurt?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And Debs says I as well. Thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone for showing up for this hearing and we will see you all again in three weeks. Okay, see you all. Okay, now on to eight forty, we are talking about Holton Street Visioning. For those who out in, in the ether, we are, the planning board is moving forward with getting a study of the Holton Street area in order to understand what development possibilities are there, what the development obstacles are. And we are looking to hire a consultant to make that. And Brian, I will hand it over to you at this point because you've got the documents.
Sure. So are you guys looking at the Holton Street?
Yep.
Scope, okay. So even though the folded here is Holton Street scope, this is actually the North Main Street scope. The five tasks that were done and the, and the, and the prices, so you know, the, the cost associated with that. So they only quote charged us thirty thousand dollars for, for this, but they gave us about forty thousand dollars worth of work. That's not accounted for in this, but this is in, in terms of just so you know, the, the work that we got had, had a value of about forty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars in taxpayer money and ten thousand dollars in technical assistance from M A P C. So the idea is that we could do something very similar for Holton Street in a smaller scale. Because what we really want to do here, and this kind of ties back to what we were talking about further is to, talking about earlier, which is to further the North Main Street study towards fall while starting to open up the Holton Street study. So the whole bucket of money that we have for these two, these two projects of, of, of going forward with, you know, starting Holton and continuing North Main is, is forty five thousand dollars. We have fifteen thousand dollars right now for Holton. It's not a lot of money. So we had thirty for North Main. We only have fifteen right now for Holton. There's thirty thousand dollars left then that we could use that we were trying to split between North Main and Holton Street. Yeah.
We do have some money left over from the master plan.
Fourteen, I believe it's fourteen, somewhere between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars.
Is that something we could apply towards Holton Street?
Yeah, yes, Holton Street was part of, and this was alluded to earlier, the word is an opportunity zone. So in the master plan, North Main Street was, was listed as an opportunity zone for further, further study and with potential zoning changes. So it's exactly what we're doing. This is definitely one of the goals of the, of the North Main, of, of the master plan. So again, that, I guess that's really more like, you know, basically forty four thousand dollars that we have between these two projects. The goal for this evening is to come up with, out of those forty four thousand dollars in total that we have for these two projects for the rest of the fiscal year. Are we splitting it fifty fifty? Or, you know, that's kind of question number one. I think the tasks that there were outlined for the North Main Street are pretty clear in terms of what we would be doing. We're doing a very similar situation at Holton. The idea is that Holton would be a little bit smaller because there are fewer number of parcels. But really, yeah, I think it's kind of determining, you know, out of that forty four total, what are we going to do with, with these two processes? I have already engaged M A P C to kind of look at bandwidth for the next week or two. They're kind of, they have to spend a whole bunch of money based upon the end of the, closing of the, of the calendar year based upon the state grants. So they're kind of not really existent at the moment, very busy. But the idea is that I've already started this process and we just basically need to kind of figure out how we want to figure, sorry, how we want to spend this, I guess now, yeah, forty four thousand dollars between these two projects over the next six months.
So I am a little loath to allocate all of our money, just in case we do have something pop up. In the past, we've had situations where, for instance, when the first RFP for Washington Swanton came up, we allocated around ten K, I believe it was, to hire consultants to help with that. I don't know if this new upcoming RFP will require that. So I would suggest that we take some amount away from that forty four just for contingency basis. I don't know if five K or eight K is an appropriate amount. But just, I, just to be on the safe side. So if we go with eight K, then we get thirty six K left over. If we go with five K, we have thirty nine. So if we limit ourselves, I think to around, if we start looking at, say, thirty six K and see what, how we want to split that up. And then maybe if we feel that's not enough, we can add a little more from the contingency. There's a word, feel strongly one way or another about that.
Really, it's, let's say it's twenty two thousand dollars in professional. Instead of thirty, let's say it's twenty two for a half. Then really, it's, let's say it's twenty-two thousand dollars in professional instead of thirty. Let's say it's twenty-two for half a, yeah, even more of a cushion of a, um, if that's what, that's what I'm hearing from you, or you're saying, sorry, twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars, so that we have a, a six thousand dollar.
We could do six. I don't know. Yeah, it's just, that's my suggestion, but I just wanna be conservative.
It's been pretty consistent so far the past several years that there's been a time where there's a clear reason for the planning board to use some of our fundings and it, some of our fund for a project that we did not, you know, that's, the, it's not really quote our project and it's somewhere in the three to eight thousand dollar range, so pretty, pretty, so, you know, consistently. So six is a good estimate. So then we're really looking at, um, you know, it's a question of how much of this twenty-four plus fourteen do we wanna give to the Holton Street? Cuz we've already, we've already said we're giving fifteen to the Holton Street. It's the master plan. It's a town meeting appropriation, so that's happening.
So in your discussion with Josh, Brian, did he, I, I think you said you discussed with him the reduction in effort for the Holton Street versus North Main. Did he provide any estimate on how much less effort that might be?
So, no, he does not have a, he does not have a detailed scope and fee yet for the, um, like I said, the, um, they're trying to close out all the contracts over the next, so it's, it's just a very busy time for them. Um, so this was not high on the list. Um, so I don't have a detailed scope and fee for him. He, and he didn't even say that it would be significantly less. He said it would be, you know, likely less. And like I said, that was, it was about forty thousand, but let's say thirty of town and, and we could apply for the next ten. Makes sense, so maybe we could give twenty and apply for, you know, five or ten and get a thirty thousand dollar project.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me. I mean, we can, well, we can, cuz we don't actually have to, um, when do we have to make a decision by the, in order to, to, to actually write the contract for this?
So, and, you know, for, for Holton Street, um, if we're, you know, if we are definitely using M A P C, which, sorry, I was confusing that earlier. So it's unclear what we're doing for North Main, continuing that project. But for Holton Street, we are moving forward with M A P C, so that can move forward very quickly. This is a contract that would be under thirty thousand dollars or under, and they're an approved vendor, um, that mean, meaning that there's, there's not a lot of moving parts that we could just draw up a contract and, and, and move. It's simply based upon availability. That's one of the beauties of, of doing that, of working with the regional planning organization.
So, um.
Are you asking, are you asking, when are we gonna get a scope and fee from them?
I'm trying to understand whether we can make a, uh, a preliminary decision. And then as we get more information, we might be able to adjust it up or down. So for instance, if we say, yeah, we're gonna do twenty K for Holton and they come back and they say, nah, you really need twenty-five. But we've already scoped out a contract for North Main Street, then we can't. I'm just trying to understand how much flexibility we have in scheduling, so, you know, if the board can't come to a, a final decision tonight, because we don't have all of the data yet.
So I think, uh, uh, it also comes down to, well, we have this much money, whatever that might be, M A P C. You know, what can you give us? Um, and that's also a potential which, which, which occurs. It's more of, okay, what do you, what are the goals of the project? What do you have? Let's see, you know, let's try to work with you through D L T A or otherwise. So it's a question of how much are you willing to give to the project? I would imagine the fifteen that's already allotted is not enough, period. So, you know, it's a question of how much more than fifteen.
Right.
So I, I know there's a lot of what-ifs here because we don't really, um, you know, the idea is that the two major projects towards the end of the year are these. Um, you know, we have some money to, to, to try to, uh, move both of them forward. They're in completely different stages. One, we're trying to get towards the finish line towards town meeting. The others, we're trying to do complete brainstorming of, of visioning that's a much larger uh, transformation than we're trying to propose at North Main.
Huh, so. So we could do a, uh, you know, one way of looking at this is to cap it at a hard limit of twenty-five and put in a soft limit of twenty, go to M A P C and say, here's twenty K, what can you give us? They come back and they say, uh, or they come back with a, with a, a plan and we say, no, we really need more than that, but we can't go higher than twenty-five. Um, that's still only gives us twelve for, or twelve or thirteen K left over. I mean, yeah, see, if we're only, if we're looking at like thirty-seven K total, or I'm looking at my numbers and they don't make sense to me anymore.
I, I get them up, hold on. So I, I was filling this in, so, um, if you figure six thousand dollars is off the top for just a cushion for other projects that we don't, this is the total amount of money. It's twenty-four thousand dollars in professional, fourteen in the master plan and fifteen in Holton. Um, so the idea is that we would take portions of the professional, five to ten potentially from that in order to hold, to make this twenty to twenty-five thousand, then we would have nine to fourteen left over of the total of twenty-four. And so we could add a, potentially have twenty-eight, um, I'm sorry, twenty-three to twenty-eight for, for North Main. That's the way it would be. It would be twenty-three to twenty-eight for North Main.
Right, so we have a total of fifty-three to play with.
That's what, so that's how it's at least shaking out at the moment is, um, pretty much split. I mean, you know, the difference of twenty-three to twenty-eight or twenty to twenty-five is pretty much, we might as well just split them uh, in terms of the money, or, or we don't have to, but that's what it's, that's what, that's what we're showing here.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Sally has a hand.
Oh, go ahead, Sally, please.
No, that's okay. I, I just, I, I wanted to just get a little bit more clarity on the deliverables that we have in mind for the Holton Street consultant.
Sure, um, so, um, the Holton Street consultant, again, still, I mean, we, we, it's M A P C. Uh, so what we would want is a, um, a detailed analysis of the current zoning, very similar to what we've seen for North Main. That's why I attached the scope from North Main as part of the, um, packet for today, or as the packet for this evening. Cuz the, the scope would be, would be similar in terms of, um, well, just the scope would be similar. It's, it's an existing conditions analysis. And then it's, uh, going through different bit, build-out scenarios for different types, uh, uh, of uses. So there's been talk about, uh, the Holton Street area there for there to, that be, uh, you know, more of a commercial base, more of uh, potentially technology or, or medical, uh, or, you know, robotics, uh, medical devices or even, um, yeah. So the idea is that residential would be subservient to it, so we would go through the potential scenarios of trend, uh, of looking at that area of what's possible. Um, simply at the, you know, from the, wh- what's on the ground in terms of physically, what do these lots look like? So the, a very similar analysis. And then, you know, um, you know, I mean, I could, I could certainly bring up the scope, but I think the idea is that the scope would be similar. I think the, I, uh, and the, the problem or the problem, the difference between Holton Street and the North Main is that I think everyone has a good vision of what North Main could look like. I think everyone can, you can go there and you can kind of see what it is and, you know, what we, we, we will eventually get there. Holton Street is more of a, it's just a different, it's a different, it's a, it's just a different rezoning. Um, it's, it's not, because I don't think anyone has a very clear indication of what would quote be a good idea for that place. Um, it has not been explored, um, significantly, and it's not screaming out for something like a North Main at all. Yeah, so sorry.
No, that's very helpful and you're right. You did, you did a very good job of putting it right in your memo, that these are what the deliverables would be. So now I understand. Thank you.
Um, so, so I obviously owe the board, uh, more information, um, related, and, and that probably will not come until our next meeting, the fourth or potentially even, you know, between the fourth and the eighteenth and an email related to some type of a scope and fee that would be realistic to the goals that we would be seeing for something like Holton. Um, I, I might have to talk to a few more people at M A P C to determine kind of what is the project, you know, what are the goals of the project? I think our goals are to, you know, start a rezoning effort. Like that, like that's, you know, which is hard to measure, right? But that's, that's kind of the goal at the moment, is start a rezoning effort for, for this area that has been, um, you know, kind of waiting, waiting for more potent, you know, or it has, there's just a lot of potential in the, in this quarter of, of town.
So, um, I think, I hope we can, um, at least close out the question of how much money we are comfortable allotting to this tonight, so. I, I, I know that there hasn't been an awful lot of discussion about those numbers, other than between me and Brian at the moment, so, uh,
Well, I think there needs to be more informa, more information. I, I think, you know, that'll help, I think. But it seems like, it seems like what I'm gathering at least, uh, from the lack of anything is that, uh, the lack of robust communication at the moment is that, you know, it seems fine for it, for us to kind of split the efforts, uh, and the resources between these two major goals of this, the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we probably almost, we, you know, could use, yeah, that amount of money in each of these projects, I'm guessing. So that's, that's what I'm picking up from the board and I can move forward with that, um, you know, as a policy direction.
Yeah, I, I would like to, um, understand on the flip side, what, you know, we've talked about what we'd like to see out of the North Main Street consultants coming up. And maybe, um, by the eighteenth, we can get a handle on what it might cost to do the marketing and the design review, cuz if that's gonna come in higher than twenty-some, then we may have to rethink. I mean, this is something, um, I just don't know how much that's gonna cost. But I guess, um, I guess we're done with this topic.
Uh, yeah, the, we have, um, thirty minutes, the last thirty minutes on the agenda are to talk about potentials, uh, spring, springtown meet, or the springtown meeting, so it could be potential articles or, or things, or things coming up. Um, I, I did not have much, it had been an agenda for this agenda item.
I did.
So, so, yeah, that's, D F, why don't you take it away?
I, I had an agenda for this agenda item and that was to discuss, um, how we move forward with the half-story redefinition. We came very close last time, um, so the question to the board is, is it worth pursuing it at Springtown Meeting? If it is worth pursuing it, what are the things that we would change about our approach? And, uh, whether, you know, so that's, that's, that's one thing I would like to discuss. And then if anyone has any other ideas about what could, we could do. I mean, we're, I don't, we're not gonna get North Main Street through, we're not gonna get anything else. I mean, this would be, right now, we have a blank slate for, uh, for articles other than that one.
I have an idea. Um, I did honestly forget, um, that that's what this, uh, I, agenda item was, was talking about. But, um, one thing that I did notice in the, um, as we were leading up, um, talking about the half-story, one thing that I noticed really quickly, or I, sorry, I did not notice really quickly. It took me some time to notice. Um, was that half-story, I just wrote these notes just now, uh, I don't know if you could see us. Is that these four, these four things is really, you can't, my recommendation would be that if we're going to be pursuing this at all, is that you can't touch one of these without touching all of these. That's my own, that would be my only recommendation to D F and anybody else. That, the, and there might even be one more. But, but, but the point is that there, um, there's at least four or five definitions that need to be worked simultaneously at the same town meeting, at the same time, if we're gonna do any of the changes. So that, that's my recommendation, that would, um, based upon kind of analyzing the, 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 uh, the effort, uh, as we went through that, uh, for last time.
I, I would add definition of floor area to that, because I.
True, yeah. Well, I guess, cuz it's, yeah, it's in terms of the, the, and if floor and floor area, actually.
Yeah, so I, I think one of the, um, my takeaways from town meeting was that I have no idea why they voted the way they did, but that there were certainly, um, the placement of the constraints in the definition versus in one of the dimensional tables is something that can be addressed hopefully without, no, with no breakage. I'm always concerned about breaking the, the zoning. But that is one thing that we can address and perhaps, that would overcome some of the opposition. Um, I don't know whether people thought it didn't go far enough. I, you know, certainly some of the opinion was it didn't go far enough. But I didn't get a sense from that discussion whether they truly understood what the constraints, what, what, what actually would happen with this. I thought that there was a, some incorrect perceptions of what this would do. And, um, so what, how does the board feel? Is this worth our while? Go ahead, just open floor, so.
Um, I'm glad we're gonna do brief, brief about this, cuz I've been thinking about it and I can't remember what the vote was. But my sense was, um, that many people didn't see it as an urgency. I don't think that they, they, they thought, I don't think that there was, um, I think there's confusion about the motive of that and, uh, you know, I think it, it, it wasn't clear, but also people didn't, um, feel an urgency for it. I don't, I don't think that people saw it as a problem. And I wonder if, um, it's worth pursuing, because I, I think that I, I, it didn't, it didn't help us, you know, politically. Like, and I don't, I don't think that it, I don't wanna do it just to present something from the board at town meeting. Um, I, I think that it would, it would be better if we presented something that was, that would really move forward. Um, and that was clear. And I, I worry that, about that for Main Street, because, um, I don't know if I can talk about it now, but, uh, you know, the, uh, scope of it, are we gonna present this like whole zoning change? Or are we gonna present like various articles where you can pass some and not the others? You know, I think that a whole zoning change would be really shocking. And I, I'm, um, getting the tone of the town more and more and how slow it, um, it wants to change, so. I, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think we should pursue it.
So, so we lost by four votes, I believe.
Really?
It was less than eight. I, 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 I was gonna say it was four or five, yes, that's.
Yeah, it was very close. And so that's a sixty percen, that's a two-thirds vote. So we got by far the majority of the votes.
D F, D F, I'm sorry, I believe that it, it failed by four or five votes for a simple majority.
No.
Oh, no, no, sorry, this was a definition. Sorry, no, sorry.
It had to be two-thirds, right?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it was two-thirds, so we came very close.
My, my sense is that people weren't understanding it. I mean, especially the comments that came up. I, I thought they didn't understand it.
I think, I think that's right, that they didn't understand it and they didn't, they didn't see an urgency. And then the other thing is that one objection that stuck in my mind was this whole notion of don't tell me what I can do. Which, I mean, obviously zoning bylaws tell you what you can do. But there was some thought that this was in some way being overstepping. And I'm not sure I agree with that, but, so that's what I remember about it, was that there was confusion. There was what Yicheng, what you just said about not understanding the need. And then for anybody who had tried to think about it, that they didn't think it was a good idea. Um, and maybe that's why we lost by four votes, who knows? Um, um, but I, I do think there's other things to Yicheng's point that, that we could bring to town meeting. to town meeting, um, whether it's for vote or whether it's for preview of votes that we, um, would like to bring to town meeting in the fall. Um, certainly, things that we wouldn't bring to town meeting in the fall would be a preview of the, of the North Main Street, um, conversations or, or decisions. Um, and then the other thing, Diab, is a preview of the accessory dwelling unit discussions. Um, we could also preview issues having to do with tree preservation, and, um, I think that's what I had in mind.
So, I mean, we can do all of those. We get, we get ten minutes to talk about whatever we want in front of town meeting, so that's a given. So we can, we can certainly do all of those things. I, I, I think Yiching, I take your comment about expending our political capital, uh, considering we have a lot of big things coming up. And I don't know how we'll present the rezoning on North Main, whether there will be a, a menu or one large thing. So, I'm kind of ambivalent, I think it's still a useful thing, I think we still have an issue. I think that certainly it was an issue in all the previous years I was on the board, people were upset about the size of new buildings or the size of additions. Um, so, I think maybe, uh, there's a transition from, between people who've just moved into town and don't see that as, they don't, they don't see the transition from smaller to larger houses as much, because, you know, it's, it's facts on the ground as they see it now. I don't know.
Well, go, going back to, um, oh, I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, I was gonna say that, you know, most of the cause, most of the constructive negative feedback was not centered around like property rights issues or, or anything like that. Most of the construction, constructive negative feedback was, we understand why you're trying to do this. We don't really think that this is going to do that. A, and that, it, I mean, for whatever this is worth, you know, there, there's a large part of that that was correct, right? I mean, that, I think that's, I think that's why I failed, is that, is that there was confusion for sure, but the truth is, is that it was, it was not really addressing it the best possible way. Was it addressing it? Maybe a little bit, sure. I, or yes, I guess is a sure, was it addressing it? Yes. Was it addressing it in the best possible way? No, it wasn't. It was, it was, it, um, it was a stab at it. So, that, that's my analysis of it.
So I thought, I think you were right on track, Brian, when you were saying, we're talking about the interconnectedness and the interdependencies of these definitions in section ten of our zoning bylaw, that you, and I don't, and I see what Diab is saying about not wanting to break the bylaw. Um, totally. Um, and I do think that there are interdependencies that we should be aware of. I remember when I was doing the research for the half-story and looking at comparable definitions in other towns, um, that I kept, um, track of their ancillary or their corollary definitions for easily a half a dozen other, um, terms that are used, and you hit on a good number of them, I can't remember the others. Um, but if the issue here is about large houses, one thing that we have talked about doing is putting, um, lower site plan review square footage thresholds as a revision to the zoning bylaw to, um, ask that therefore more properties come before us for review of their mass and character relative to their, um, surroundings. That's one thing that I think we could explore and talk about. So I was thinking.
Um, we can certainly talk about that off, off the bat, I don't think that's, that's something that, uh, I don't, I don't know what the next step is for large house review, but I, I don't believe it's trying to enter more projects into the ZBA pipeline. I don't, I, I, I don't, I don't know. That's more scary to me than, uh, than not. Not to say that that's not the right answer, but if the idea is, like you're saying, I mean, what you said was, well, do we wanna bring more houses under review for ZBA? I don't, I don't, I don't know if, you know, that's not one of my goals related to large house design. If large house site plan review, right now at thirty-six hundred square feet, five thousand and six thousand, those are big. Right now, that is stressing the resources of town and, and ZBA currently, right now. So the idea is, okay, that we shouldn't necessarily not do that because of the, the resources, but we're, we're, we are having issues, uh, it's with the amount of applications that are currently under review. Not to say that we need to have more things by right and have less review, but the idea of specifically saying we need to get more large houses under review, that's not something I can say that, um, you know, first thing on my list.
So, I think we could, we could separate this into two separate ways of looking at it. One is that we know that this is a place in the bylaw which needs to be clarified and cleaned up. So, if we do so, if, if we, if we propose new language which brings clarity but doesn't change the bylaw outcome, then I think that's a win. And that's something we've talked about, about how there are various parts of the bylaws, which is just poorly written and very confusing. So that's one way of looking at this, is, is, is not to try to solve the large house problem, but to bring some clarity, which could be the first step towards something.
So, Dan, maybe you're, you're saying that the first step is for there to be some type of a legal review of these definitions, simply to make them coherently, uh, you know, to, to, to make them, yeah, uh, consistent with each other. Uh, cause right now they're not, you're saying, well, why can't we do this without changing the bylaw? The thing is that there are several definitions that are inconsistent with each other to the point where one is right quote and one is wrong, I mean, you, you can't have both of them.
Maybe, yeah, so if the bylaw is, so we, we, we know that we have dimensional requirements and they're based upon definitions, and the definitions change depending upon how, what part of the square footage you're measuring. So there, there are, I think if we had a legal review, or we, we have a narrow focus, a legal review on so, on these definitions, and legal can say, we can de, we can disentangle some of these so that there's clarity, then that would, um, reduce friction later if we wanna change something. Um, so that was one approach. The other approach, or the other, the, the flip side of this is, if we are interested in doing something about large houses, then looking at another way of dealing with that, which is a separate issue. So for instance, simply reducing the, 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 the allowed height is one very quick thing, it's not a tricky thing, you just say, you know, we're at, what are we at, forty now? Take it down to thirty-five.
Yeah. Um, people have been talking about that for several years, um, but yes, we are, we have the tallest, we have one of the tallest, uh, by right heights, uh, of any community we compare ourselves to. Um, most everyone else is at thirty-eight or thirty-seven or thirty-six.
And by several years, Brian means a, a couple of decades, so. So that's an option, we could just address it in a much more direct fashion, saying, you just can't build a tall house.
Is the height really what's driving the size of homes? Or is it, it seems to me like it's, like, I'm not seeing four-story houses anywhere in Winchester, right?
You, you can't even do three-story houses, so, um, you can only do, it's forty feet, two and a half stories. So what they're doing is they're vaulting the, the, their, their, um, the, the first, the first floor are very, very tall ceilings because they can, and the idea is everything is just a little puffed up.
Okay.
That's, and, and that's all that's happening, so, um, the idea is someone could have, um, you know, fifteen, sixteen feet on the first floor, fifteen feet on the second, and then another twelve as a half-story. It all looked, yeah, they could all, it all, it's all, it's a two and a half story, but, and it's like, it's, I think that's, that's, that's an issue, sure. So, it, but it, you're, i- is it the height? It's not really the height, because.
It's like a lot coverage, is like where I always see like just massive, like, right, like developers subdividing lots, like the lot coverage is just.
And build to the center. Yeah, I, I would encourage everybody to drive down Gin, there are five developments going on right now.
Yes.
Uh, two of them are, you know, renovations, uh, another story on top of a, a, you know, single story. And these are all like nineteen seventies ranch houses. And then like three of them are total knockdowns and then like humongous, but probably like fifty-five hundred square feet houses, um, plus, and they are exactly right, it's like, um, they're really deep, big lots, and, um, you know, it's, it's getting to the max of the setbacks and.
Right.
Building as big as possible, and they're two-point-six million dollars.
Right.
So, yeah, our building footprint's thirty percent, um, which is also on the bigger side compared to, to others. Um, but, um, you're right, people are still building very large houses at thirty-six feet. Like, it doesn't matter, because you, because forty is ridicul, like, why would you need that much height to do a two and a half story home?
It's more square footage, right?
Yeah, I know, that, yeah, I'm agreeing with both of you.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, but we can't actually put a requirement on square footage, there are limits, but there are legal limits as to how we can.
No, it's just making the review, making the trigger for review lower. Sal, Sally mentioned that's one thing that could happen, is that right now, for instance, in the RG.
We can't, we can't, for instance, say, we can't put a limit on the number of square feet a house can have.
No, but you, I mean, we could make it so that it's not single-family only. I mean, that's the, that's the thing that could change the developers' like mindset, it's like you could make it into a duplex, triplex, quad, quadplex. And but that's like California dreaming.
Well, I, I think we're moving, uh, but I don't think we're gonna get there in the next couple of years.
I don't think we're gonna get there by Winchester alone, I think the state has to do it.
I agree, so the question is, what can we do at the Winchester level? Um, increasing the amount of, um, decreasing the percentage of a lot you can build on is, is one option. Um, increasing setbacks is another option. Reducing the size of a lot that you can build, or, or I should say, allowing subdivision of lots.
That would be huge, yeah, that would be a really big deal, because there are twenty thousand square foot lots on the west side, easily, and then like fifty-five hundred, you know, lot sizes in town.
But you can build a monster house on a ten thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
So just simply reducing the lot size won't help you unless you also reduce, reduce coverage, reduce something else, we need one other, one or two other things, go ahead, Sally.
Well, so I'm, I know just from talking to other people that there's such a thing as large house review bylaw in the town of Wellesley. And my question to you, Brian, is have you had a chance to read that? I have not, um, and, and what does it, um, uh, control? What does it limit? What does it provide for?
Uh, it is almost to a T exactly what we have here in Winchester, site plan review.
And does it, does it have constraints that we're missing?
No, i- i- it's, so it, um, it's, it's, this, it's a, a different calculation in terms of where to get there, but it's the same, it's the same thing that we have in Winchester. We have large house review in Winchester, it's just, it's site plan review, and one of the triggers for site plan review is houses over a certain size. So, um, we, when we wrote that, we looked at Lexington and ten other communities.
Right.
And, you know, that's what we have here in Winchester.
So, so then that gets to the larger question, um, that Diab and Yiching have both been on, which is this question of how can we um, stop the teardown of smaller affordable homes, this missing middle question? And how can we encourage more smaller affordable homes to be built in town? And Yiching hit on it with the notion of changing lot sizes and of being more, making it as of right to subdivide a lot, um, to a smaller size, um, in some way that would allow or encourage um, multifamily homes to be built. I know it sounds radical, and you know, Yiching called it California dreaming, but, um, I think the demand is here. The housing crisis is real. And we can't solve it in our one six and a half square mile town, but we certainly have a role. And I don't know how to, I just don't know how daring and bold and political, political capital expending we wanna be, or we can be.
Yeah, I, to, to be honest, I worry, I worry a lot that we will simply create lots of extra big houses. Because I can tell you in my neighborhood, which is a lot of smaller lots, when they tore down the old houses, they have, you know, these are sixty-five hundred square foot lots, a lot of them. Some of them are ten thousand, they've just built massive things, so even on small lots, you can build to the, you know, they've got, they put in duplexes where each side was four thousand square feet. So, I mean, those are just in nor, so I don't, I don't think I, I think there's, there's, you know, if, if we just make it possible for a lot more expensive houses to be built, because we've subdivided and we've given more land, I don't think we're, I think we're kind of gone backwards, so.
Um, I think Cambridge has allowed this overlay where, you know, you can, you can change the setbacks and height and, and massing if you include affordable housing. So there's that, you know, you can do that on Brattle Street even, right? To like, build six units with two affordable.
It's like a flexible zoning overlay, um, but it's also could just be an affordable housing overlay over the entire town.
That was a huge, huge political battle.
It's a big battle, uh, in general, because you, you have to put it over the whole town to do it.
But you only get, but we only have to get fifty percent at town meeting to get.
That's true, that's true.
Because of the affordable housing component. Cheryl, you were, you were, you had your hand up.
No, I, I, I find, I find the conversation interesting, but I, I just kinda wanna reflect on the meeting, because it's been, it's been a, a really dynamic one with a lot of different topics that are really hard. And I, but I'm just, I'm feeling like this last topic is pointing me back in the direction of Ten Converse Place. And the fact that we have something on our plate right now, that, you know, if, if you, Diab, have recently gotten, um, this court case about, you know, the hardware site, and that's gonna blow up on us. I think, I think we really need to be sure that we find a way to get these Ten Converse Place and, and, um, you know, the, the density that we're looking for in trying to, you know, curb Manch, McMansions. Um, I think we've got them right in front of us, and we need to make sure that these, the Ten Converse Place and, and the Fells Hardware site are successful, you know, and, and I think that's really important to the planning board. Um, more so than, um, trying to talk to town meeting members who most of them have probably lived here a heck of a long time, and, and like Yiching was saying, don't wanna see change, and so they like, they nitpick everything that, that we put into, you know, these, I, I think clarifying is, is exactly the right thing to be doing, but I, I'd just rather see us use our, our energies to really get, so, you know, something like Ten Converse Place through, and to get the town to really buy into it. You know, like work hard at it so that we look like we really, we vetted what they, what people have said, we, we've, you know, we've looked at things carefully, having tool tonight was great, but, you know, all she's really done is analyze what the developers put forward, where if we have other questions, we're gonna need to make sure that more studies are done, because Ian didn't do them, you know, things like that.
Yeah, so I, I think we, we have to be careful about talking about Ten Converse out of the hearing, because.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
I was just making an example of, you know, hiring people to help us, and then, and then just listening to them and then just going, okay, that was, you know, check that off the list, kind of thing, so.
So I, I'm not worried about six fifty-four Main Street in terms of that, that particular appeal. It doesn't, it doesn't have a lot to stand on, it's in a butter, and their claims are not. I, I, I think we're completely, we have, there's, it's just, I think we're, we're fine with that, the only problem is it'll drag out the building for a while. I mean, it's hopefully not as long as what's happening to the, uh, the old. Hopefully not as long as what's happening to the uh, the old Mahoney place, where I don't know how many, they've been in in appeal for a decade, I think, but. I understa, so I I think if I can paraphrase what you're saying is that. By doing this, we build up trust so that the town will. Go along with us when we go towards more radical suggestions.
Well, it's the, it's what we're working on that brings people to these meetings. Like, when I see the screen fill up and I know people are listening, I think that's. Um, yeah, that's when we we build trust, as you said. I think that's a perfect way of putting it, yeah.
It was very quickly, as I see that it is nine thirty one on my clock, and the whole point of us starting early was to to end at nine thirty, but I think I would just to what. To hit the exclamation a little bit on what Cheryl was saying, I think it's really important what she was saying, which is that in terms of what is the impact. Of what we're doing. And the idea is that, yeah, well, we could, let's say we make duplexes everywhere. I'm not saying that, I'm just, you know what I mean, like, what's actually gonna. Um, what's actually going to, you know, provide more housing, same price point, and that's, and and that's the whole thing, is that. It's projects in the center and along North Main Street and potentially, and you know. It's where, and and I think the idea is that I think a lot of people think that. Not just the planning board, but the development in general is like, everything all over town is gonna change. It's like, well, really, we're trying to keep Winchester. The way it, the way it is. That's why people moved here, but grow in the areas where that need to grow, which is essentially around transit. And there's obviously some, some growing pains associated with that for everybody. Um, but yeah, I think you're talking about more bang for your buck is is the idea is like. Look looking at and getting the best you can out of the projects in the center in order so that we can keep the neighborhoods at a lower density.
And I don't, I don't wanna spread ourselves too thin. Sorry, Kurt.
Oh, no, I was just saying, I think what I'm also hearing you're saying, Cheryl, which I think I agree with, is like perhaps, you know, focusing time and effort on. You know, some of these definitions in advance of this meeting is maybe not the best use for our time. Like, we should really just be focusing more on. Big projects, things that are more impactful for the town. I think, I think it's a little bit what I was hearing. I don't wanna paraphrase or or put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, and then I heard, um, you know, the the old C V S site coming on now. I think that's a really. That's hugely important. I mean, the laundry building, the C V S, you know, lot, these are things that everybody drives by every day and it's just like.
Waterfield, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, waterfield and um.
I totally agree with you, Cheryl, that that it that our um, the 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 trust of our community. Depends on us working on and delivering on meaningful changes that. Um. Um, are in alignment with what people wanna see for the town, which is why I like the master plan, because it it. Represents a very robust townwide conversation. Um, and so I think that focusing on the projects that we have now, making sure that they align. With our master plan goals and our vision for the town is a really good thing for us to focus on, so. I think the meeting needs to end because it's late.
I think the meeting does lead to need to end, um, and unfortunately, my connection is getting wonky. So I have no idea if you can understand what I'm saying. Oh, yeah, I just, uh, I just wanna say one thing in closing is that. Uh, we we do have to spend some effort on cleaning up our crusty zoning. Even though it's not, it's not exciting, we we will not get the limelight for doing so, but it will make our job easier in the future. And uh, if there is a motion to return, I would welcome it.
I moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Excellent, uh, roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
Eaching.
Aye.
And D Jurius is I as well. Uh, we, it brings this meeting to an end. We will see everyone after the new year. Uh, I hope you all have a great end of the year. Uh, thank you to uh, Brian Zekely, our town.